All right, seven o'clock, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. All council members are present, appreciate y'all coming out and letting us reschedule after what a difference a week makes in the weather. Eighty today. Please send a quick word of prayer. Our most kind and gracious heaven and father will come to you tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us in our town. We ask if you be with Pastor King as he continues to recover from his sickness, as you be with him in blessing and health and well-being. Father, we just ask that you fill our hearts with wisdom and our minds with faith that we will make decisions for our town and we'll be pleasing unto you. In your great and heavenly name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, thank everybody for coming out, the weather was rough last week, it is amazing, it's twenty-five and snowing and eighty and sunny today. Thank y'all. All right, I said roll call, all members are present. Approval of the minutes for the meeting in January.
We're welcome to approve January twenty-first minutes.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the minutes for the meeting in January, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Unopposed and approved. Approval of the financial statement for January.
Mr. Brown moving to approve the January financial statement, second.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the financial statement for January, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Unopposed and approved. Reports of city departments, fire department.
Got a little bit of a delay. So, for this year so far, we've had seventeen permits. Fire department has been a hundred and forty so far. We have an upcoming CPR class for the public that March twentieth at sixteen U and just called the fire department, we won't reschedule. Uh, we got five days of training for our training officer to come put together, we've got house building to us that we're gonna work with. And I'm just gonna give you a brief summary of all of it, it's just like same size of operations, forceful injury, three sixties and dog assignments. Search and rescue, victim rescue, ventilation practices, ladder work, group work, hose deployments, backup firefighter work, blowing and moving, then we'll move into the live fire scenarios, live fire attack, live fire search. It's gonna be a little bit of training on training before we start.
Where's the CPR class gonna be at?
March, oh, it'd be at the fire department.
Are there costs for that class?
What happened?
Is there a cost for that class?
Well, five of them, for the, for the, your car.
Do you have to pre-register or can you just kind of?
Did you, I just called and we'll put something, because Willie and they were, instructors, whoever's going to be instructors, they're not, those send your emails off, whoever applies, they'll reset for you before you go and get their paperwork filed.
While Jimmy's, go ahead, while Jimmy's up, did you have a question then?
I did, uh, did you say, uh, the number of permits so far this year?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, you have any? That's it, just seventeen?
There's seventeen permits, yes, for the year.
Thank you.
All right, well Jimmy's here, real quick, we, uh, back in January, we, we got an issue with one of the fire trucks, I want to make the council aware. Uh, they have about thirty-six thousand in their budget this year, but this repair is on the cost of about twenty-six thousand, it's a leaking, uh, pump. I've looked at it and seen that there's something we could work on at, at our farm or help in some way, and it's kinda complex.
The Mac didn't fix it?
The house, Mac doesn't fix it either, we looked at it, but, but I want the council to be aware of that, we might have to go back in and look at this budget later in the year, but it is a very critical truck and, and I want to offer that in proceedings.
Which truck is it?
Tower truck.
The ladder truck?
Tower, one has a truck on front of it, it's towering.
Mr. Brown, can I have that amount again, please?
Twenty, approximately twenty-six.
Well, I think we've had the figures, am I right?
Probably twenty-six thousand. All right, thank you, Jimmy. On the planning commission, um, don't see anybody here, they are gonna be Thursday, February twenty-seventh, seven PM here at the city hall. Be a pretty important hearing, I think, I think it'll be pretty quick, but it'll be a public hearing on the Taco Bell site plan and the commercial building site plan. And, uh, they're this time, you can add if I get through here.
You're going great.
Taco Bell has been great to work with and, uh, been very well laid out planned, like I said, there'll be a lot split and Taco Bell. Uh, there's also a mobile food truck on there that's coming into town and, uh, the three items will be the Taco Bell site plan and then the lot split. And then there's another commercial building gonna go in there beside the Taco Bell as well. And, uh, we've had, we've had a great time working with the highway department and everything, and really neat working with that corporate company, wouldn't you agree, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
It is good news for our town.
Mr. Brown, can you tell us where the food truck is planning to go to?
Uh, it will be, my understanding, I think it's gonna be at, uh, the old Big Ten's building.
Where it's currently at?
Yes. Uh, it's, I can't pronounce it. Dr. Regis.
Dr. Regis, uh, they're already, I think, I don't know.
They're already there.
Yeah. All right, I don't know of anything else on the planning commission, uh, police department?
In front of you, you should have four reports that we put out every year, uh, part of our elite program, we have two reports over what we've done here, we pursue by basically, send use of boards and review of our exits and such. Some is kinda long, so if you have any questions, call me, it's, it's, I think, I don't know, whatever, answer anything I have. I didn't get you here till now, but we've hired another officer, Tyler Crawford, the thing, I'll bring him next month for any things that let you see, fill the empty spot. We've got some, all the computers in, and we got for the grant, from the equipment grant, uh, we got all installed for. I'll try and get that done this week, maybe. We got all our vests in, a little professor in. Once we get the clear check back from the bank, so we're paid for it, and I'll submit that to the Department of Justice to get our, uh, matching funds on that. And then, uh, we're still waiting on a payment for our equipment grant, so the equipment grant just provides you the seventy-five thousand that we got, we've already got that money. And now we should have proved that we spent on what we said we was gonna spend on. The whole progress program, you gotta get it and pay for it, prove that you paid for it before you get your match, so if you see stuff coming in and out of the, you know, financials, that's, that's one of the grand money, moving back around, staying forward here. Any questions?
Right, on the new heart you have, is you guys negotiating with the county or are you starting for?
He's gonna go, go go in, uh, made it for, so we go.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Sheriff Park, Director Dale?
Uh, Fox Run Subdivision is, uh, the, uh, well, section one-on-seven, I have determined that it is cursed. Put a new pump in and they got it all calibrated, and we were waiting on the electric before we hit the zone. Got all that in, when they turned it all back on, the original pump, the shaft twisted off, so we had to order a new shaft. And that should be in any time now, they will get that installed and programmed, we will come back, we're hoping next Friday. And get it all programmed and then hopefully we'll be done, say a prayer. That's all I have, I know you're ready, that's all I want to bring you up to.
Mr. Maxwell, can I ask a question? The pump at Fox Run subdivision, it was brought up last time.
I did not get an answer to that, I apologize, I forgot to ask Brandon about that, actually, I texted him when I sat down here a year ago. If he answers before the meeting's over, I'll, before we get out of here, I'll tell you all about it.
Okay.
I apologize, I just forgot that.
I'm sorry, if you can find out where that pump is at, on Fox Run, cause like I said, I remember there appears to be a, it's some type of an auxiliary pump sitting back, that there for a couple years. I'm just curious if that's where it is.
Well, I asked you, is it already installed?
Yes.
Yeah, I was asking what that is, so I should have answered it before we went, hopefully before you get out of here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, street department, um, they're getting ready to look at some more of the ditching on some of the, uh, banks on some of the roads, some of themselves and, uh, and even you were here and y'all started that program fifteen years ago, we're gonna do that. Uh, I did get a, uh, we did put out the bid, like I told you, I was coming to look into, uh, getting straight lights finished from here and from the city hall to Highway sixty-four. Uh, putting those in, um, getting the old lights that are here currently off the city hall circuit, redoing some wiring here in the city hall that needs to be done and getting those in. Uh, we did put that out for bid and the low bid that we got was from Edith Electric, she's here in Bloom, down here at the, um, sixty-four bypass there, one-on-seven. And the low bid that we got was sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars, let's put that in. Uh, that will finish up most of our, with all of our commitment on the project we started about thirteen years ago, on the, uh, lighting on the main part of town and, and church, that was all kinda tied into one. Any questions?
I have a couple questions, please, and please pardon my ignorance, cause I'm new here on this council, well, I'm not as new as some of the actors, man. Can you enlighten me, I would be asked by somebody in the community, I've been there, what is our process for putting out bids?
Uh, we put that out for bid in the paper.
In the newspaper? And then, um, this, this was, we was awarded grants on this previously.
We have.
Allocating the, the expenditure.
We're in good shape on that.
Thank you.
Uh, any further questions?
How much we received of grants for the big project?
That project right there altogether was around four million, I believe, total, when it was all done, and then we received, uh, probably three million bridge grants, working on the drainage and stuff, and I wanna thank you for your help on the drainage issues, I know you and I haven't had time to talk about it much, but I, I really appreciate your insight. And your help with the highway department on this new project, I know Lacosta and Stephen ran on that as well, looking at widening those bridges, but we, we probably received probably seven, eight million dollar grant.
This is, I think it's good for us to put a little skin in the game, you know, that.
I agree.
Cause we have received a lot of money and it shows that we do have an interest.
The, the federal highway administration, I think that's right, and the state, I visit with them, so they've been very impressed with our sidewalk project. It's, it's, it gets a lot of use, and we're gonna work on some more projects this summer, uh, going towards the Dollar General, that direction.
I, you know, that, I'm glad to hear that too, Mayor Collins, I, I travel always sixty-four, East Ford to work in one main street, and I see kids coming from the subdivisions, down to my subdivision, um, you know, there's no shelter there, from the walk, a lot of those kids walk and they'll be wet under their knees, walking through the grass and everything, so I.
A lot of people use our sidewalks, I mean, I've seen that. It was church street has been used a lot, it's kinda warmed my soul for all the upheavals that we went through, trying to get that done, but it, it's turned out to be good, so.
Mr. Brown, if I could interject something on that, with that meeting from the highway department on one-on-seven, one of the things that was brought up was the barricade around the gas meter there at the school, or the gas line here at the school. Um, I just wanna thank Summit Utilities because they did come and put that in.
They didn't do that.
And so it now has a barricade around it, um, right there at the school where you turn to the old country.
Didn't you have a visit statement as well about the top line on their study?
Yes, um, I talked to, I can't remember her name for life, it'll relate from the highway department, uh, but she said that they're running behind a little on it, but it's a state agency, so I expected that. Um, but she said that hopefully by the end of this month, they should have a report and hopefully something to us next month on recommendations for improvements and all that, so we'll see. Um, originally I anticipated for around January, I was getting that report, but it's kinda.
I'm excited to see some recommendations, yeah.
Um, I did know that day we were standing out there, the guys from the firm, the engineering firm, highly recommended us doing something about traffic light, uh, for safety reasons for pedestrians, so it'll be interesting to see what they, suggestions they can do.
So the, so the public will know, any, any traffic light on any state highway system is maintained and controlled like a hog by the highway department.
But this is being maintained, we pay for it.
Yeah, well, we get to pay the bills, but they control everything that goes on, and we have worked past seven or eight years to try to get some improvements, and I think one thing was good out of that onsite engineering review they had a year or two back was, I think they actually solved an eight, cause we rubbed several letters in, in that block. And I'm also excited to see, you know, later on down the road, and if they replace those bridges down there to, to help alleviate, uh, getting floodwatered out.
Back to the light, uh, do you need a motion for that, or is that budget?
I need a motion, they will come out this weekend.
I made a motion.
I'll second.
That's on the bid here?
Mm-hmm, a motion and a second to accept the low bid from Edith Electric.
Come out of street funds?
Come out of street fund for sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars.
And basically, we've already received funding for this over the years, we're just, we're just allocating the spending.
Yeah, we're just, we're gonna finish the project. All right, all those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any vote, all right, thank you, council, we'll get that done, and I think you'll like the look, and it'll help the city hall building as well, some electrical load. Um, I finally done it, sometimes I get made fun of for looking down and shuffling papers up here, but I have, I have totally lost Terry Shannon's report from Parks and Rec. I apologize to Terry ahead of time here on the broadcast, uh, but, uh, I don't want anything major on it, but when I find it, I will, uh, I will send it to you, I will have Kelly, Luther, Magic, and your computer and get it to you. But I apologize, and I'll keep looking for it here if I get time, you know, they're discussing it. But as far as I know, everything's good right now at this time, uh, the registration is ongoing, um, for, for basketball, softball, I do know that. But, uh, I'll keep looking here, and then I may run back to my office, I apologize. All right, public comment, see, now we'll move on, um, announcements, um, I'll go through some of my notes here real quick and then we'll get in some of the others. My office did receive the Eastman Agreement for Mini Dallas Annexation from Landon Sanders Attorney's Office, we do have that. Uh, the Arkansas Municipal League has been informed, the Department of Dustin Chapman is our city attorney, and I've seen Justin, he's been a pleasure to work with already, he has really, uh, I've really enjoyed working with him. Um, at the January council meeting, I failed on reappointing the search manager, I failed to include Tony Fox. Uh, I just want the record to reflect that he has been reappointed in the area, and he is on the search mission, Tony Fox.
Do you need us to make a motion and?
I knew we, we, uh, reappoint Tony Fox.
I'll second that.
Have a motion second to reappoint Mr. Tony Fox to the Bologna Surge, and all those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
I apologize for that. Uh, Joe Maxwell, Mr. Joe, council member, Joe Maxwell has pulled the code of conduct resolutions for this, it's a January city council meeting. We are making headway on storm sirens, um, we, uh, we have a lot of lightning strikes, uh, but we're really, really close to having them all up and running, we've, uh, we've, uh, we'll have a inspection of all of them here within the next two weeks, and that correct? Their, before severe weather season, we do that, and, uh, so we are working at that. I'm going to look at painting the outside of the city hall and Sandersville building, neither one of those structures have had any painting done to them since they were constructed, I think this building was two thousand and seven.
I think we did, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven.
So we have been doing some maintenance around, uh, very few people would notice, we repainted the signs that y'all put in years back, uh, a lot of these outriggers on these buildings and stuff are metal, they're rusty. Uh, so I'm gonna look at getting those repainted, both the senior and, and the city hall, wanna make you aware of that. Get to brag a little bit, which is, uh, sometimes I'm really tickled, I think it shows what great staff we have here, how honest and forthright and how hardworking they are. Sometimes I get beat up, but, but a few on, on social media that I, if you got your Metro Plan report, I don't know how many got it in the mail, uh, Metro Trend's December twenty-twenty-four, from Metro Plan. Uh, if you look down here at the tables, you'll look, the long, two hundred and seventy-five percent increase in growth. I think that says a lot.
True.
For what we've been able to do. Uh, you know, some of the comparable cities, business showed sixty percent, Bryant fifty-four percent, Cavis fifty-nine percent, Conway was actually off a little bit, um, let's see, Little Rock fifty-four percent, uh, Sheriff Loop is up about twenty percent, um, this is a very good read, anything that Metro Plan puts out, they put out several publications a year. These, these make a big part of anybody reading and interested in truly what's going on in the city, uh, it tells you a lot about what's going on. I tell you what I think's gonna be the next thing here, and you can see that in this report, and I think it's just a matter of time, and fire department is periodically prepared to handle this. I think you're gonna see some big apartment complexes in the future. Uh, that's where a lot of the growth, if you look over in here in the multifamily, um, Conway has added six hundred and sixty-eight units in just a four-month period. Uh, Little Rock had five hundred and thirty-eight, um, Denton had one hundred and eighty, and, uh, I think that's gonna be a trend to see from two and three-story apartment complexes, I think they'll come here. And, uh, I follow the fire department, their tower truck and their, and their ladder truck, we're looking ahead, and we've been helpful with the high school gym and everyone, uh, but, uh, but that's just some good stuff. Uh, and figures right here, Jimmy and I, I didn't have any chance, we, just in January, I mean, we had fourteen new building permits, um, we're excited about the Taco Bell. Uh, we, we've had some interest from some other retailers, uh, that are looking, and, uh, we've had some interest from, from some people that have made it into pretty good subdivisions. But I think it says a lot for our town, uh, you know, they're good workers, they're honest, uh, like I've always said, the books are always open here for anybody in the city, and, uh, I welcome them by any time, uh, that's what we're here to do. Being honest and transparent before they have to make this little town burn.
All right.
A question, at what point do we move up in class? I know last time we decided not to do that.
It's over five thousand.
Over five thousand, we're doing, so it's a big, the next thing.
You don't have a choice, do you?
That's correct.
No, yeah, twenty-third, we'll go to city of first class, no choice.
Congratulations.
Change a little.
Yeah, yeah, I have to.
One other question, what does, what does the fire department need to go, I guess it's go down in the plans, I don't know which way it is, but.
We go that, we go that. We have water supply, uh, water supply is our biggest factor, and then full-time staff, that's our two main factors to get us up, down to a lower ice, oh, rating.
Okay, we're currently what, Jimmy, thirty, or?
Thirty.
Which is still really.
The only thing we miss the two by is just full-time staffing and water flow pressure that we have throughout the city.
The thirty is a really good rating, though.
It is, it's a very, very, it says water.
Number seven.
Yeah.
Me too.
But, you know, there's not, they can deliver, there's not very many, those are one, the hundred-dollar one is gone there.
Yes, sir.
They don't.
How many pages bad do you have to have?
It's just about, around the clock's bad.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours bad.
Is, is one version twenty-four hours, or?
I don't really know the exact, I think it's three, to be honest, I think it's at least three.
I think that sounds very, very shit.
Yeah. Two and three, so, uh, not this.
Chalk over.
Sounds like one.
Yeah. Anybody else on that, I, we want, we want to kick the citizen forum about things that go on within the city, and the city of Bologna has the app, you can find it at Connect Bologna at the Apple or Android App Store. This will allow you to receive notifications on your phone about anything that's going on in the city, agendas and all that stuff, so, uh, all right?
You want me to mention about, I'm there, some general announcements about the visitor forestry yesterday?
I forgot about that.
Um, yes, Patty, I met with, uh, one of the tree guys from the forestry commission about adding trees to our city, uh, mainly out of Weaver Family Park. Uh, he recommended some species and also recommended ones to stay away from, uh, so hopefully I'll have something put together by next council meeting for y'all to kinda look at. Uh, we're looking at possibly doing some pecans out there, uh, which is something I talked with Mayor about, uh, making like a walkable nut garden kinda thing, so that way you'll have so many pecan trees, maybe in an area where you can go out in a couple months, anybody to bowl up and stuff. Uh, now, granted, there'll be smaller trees, which take a few years to grow, that, you know, to that size, but, uh, we gotta start somewhere, so, uh, looked at that. Also, he mentioned about being a tree, tree city USA, um, so that's something I'll look into as well, uh, where forestry survives a, um, tree every year that we can plant somewhere on public grounds. So we could put it either out in the city hall, the parks, you know, the library, anywhere that we own property, um, and it doesn't seem too complicated, I would have to have a tree board and pass an ordinance and that'd be about it, so.
It's just one tree per year.
Yes, um, and it's gonna be a nursery type tree, so it'd be one of the ten-foot, thirty-gallon root balls, so it would grow fairly quickly, and it kinda depends on, uh, what they have in stock, depending from an oak to a, a signature or whatever, so.
Councilman, did you say a nut garden?
Yes, sir, that's kinda what they call little urban nut gardens.
Comeback congress?
I don't know what else you would like to call it, um.
All right, thank you on that, I will tell you real quick, side note, I always love seeing the elderly, the plumber for the cons out here.
You know, when they're, when they're dropping, they're out there every day.
When we claimed this up years ago, the old Charlie place, it, a little tree, it's about that big around, grew it, and he's helping with it all the time, and blowing them to knock it down, I was like, no, it's late, it's. Yes, all right, uh, department recognition, but council person, without the name?
Thank you, sir, so this month I wanted to bring appreciation to, it's not necessarily a department of the city, but it's the Puiwe basketball program. We have so many coaches and parent volunteers and, you know, we really have a great Puiwe program here, so just when you see those guys out, I know they sometimes get a hard time, and even the referees can kinda get a rough time sometimes, but just be honest to them, tell them thank you, and, you know, my daughter's thirty now, and she still talks about playing basketball here at Bologna, so we really do have a great Puiwe program, which we thought.
I will echo that, and they do, they do take a lot of things like athletes are, uh, very spirited for some of the.
They're just gonna look at you.
So, uh, that is, thank you.
Thank you.
Chamber of Commerce?
I'm Jackie Boggs, our president of the Bologna, uh, Area Chamber of Commerce, and we just completed having our, uh, annual awards banquet. It was a big success, we got about a hundred and fifty people in attendance, wanna thank Mike and Brady and Joe and Lacosta for all attending and being supportive there, we appreciate it. Very told with our speaker, and he did a great job, and he's a great person, and he's a great representative of Bologna, and, um, and he's in other places. Um, I'd like to read our award winners that we had this year, our youth of the year was Landon Runyon, family of the year, Charlie and Linda Weaver family, school employee of the year, Aaron Rapphold. School Employee of the Year, Aaron Rapphold. City Employee of the Year, Vanessa Flores. Volunteer of the Year, Tim Turner. Nonprofit of the Year, Spirit of Bologna. New Business Spotlight was Botanical Forest. Chamber Spotlight was Patrick Medical. Business of the Year was Carlson Gracie Jiu-Jitsu. And Citizen of the Year was Kim King. And we're real proud of all of those, and I think they're all really good representatives of our community. Uh, we have our chamber, um, our chamber department with the Bologna Hospital. Tomorrow is Freshman Community Service Day. And y'all may or may not know that freshmen have to now have 75 hours of community service to graduate. So they, they're having a day tomorrow, and we have at least one member that will be supervising those. I think this member is gonna be at the Veterans Museum supervising the volunteers, make sure that they do what they're supposed to do. Our next monthly luncheon will be March the 20th at 11:30 at Central Simon's. Uh, the Department County Democratic Women will be our guest speaker next month. Any questions? Thank y'all.
I could just echo, um, Ms. Jackson, so talking about the Veterans Museum.
Yeah.
Um, in the hours for graduation requirements. So March 22nd starts the GI Joe program at the Veterans Museum. And that's a program from March through November, leading up to Veterans Day. That over the course of that much, will be 40 hours of community service and, uh, for members of the Fall Soldier. So I did dispatch here, I loved it, and hopefully get more people to come out on March 22nd, um, sign up for it.
All right, thank you. Uh, the planning commission will meet February 27th at 7:00 PM. Like I said, we went over that, just to make sure everybody's there, and we'll be the top plan review for Taco Bell and Mercy Building. Old business, um, resolution 2025 dash four, recognizing the quality of all councilmen.
Mr. Mayor, um, so I, I, I received the communication, as we all did, I'm sure, uh, from City Attorney. And he suggests that Section 5 be removed because, uh, the mayor doesn't have the right to withhold any information from the council per four-year. So with that, I would like to request that I take this down at this time.
Right, heard the crowd from, from tonight, so anybody, I really, there are no business, and they're allowed to take it down. All right? Uh, new business, uh, resolution 2025 dash five, Veterans Museum Police Group. And I apologize, I'm still trying, Jimmy, can you go in my office and see if you can find that one page? Review from, uh, J.J.? Hate that misplaced. Yeah. Just bothering me.
We noticed that.
Resolution 2025 dash five, be it resolved by the City Council of Bologna, State of Arkansas, a resolution entitled, a resolution authorizing the mayor of Bologna to renew the lease of the city property located at 53 North Mount Olive Road, Bologna, Arkansas, 72173, to the Museum Brigade for the purpose of operating the museum of veterans and military history as stated through their Articles of Incorporation and adopted by law. Whereas the City Council of Bologna recognizes the need for the project, encourages with its importance and the importance of the community, and the City Council of Bologna supports the Museum of Veterans and Military History and its efforts to proceed with this. And whereas the Museum Brigade requests to renew the lease. And therefore be it resolved that the mayor of Bologna is hereby authorized to renew the current lease, set to expire on March 17th, 2025, for a further 10-year with an option to renew with the Museum Brigade for the sum of $10.00 at the beginning of each term of the lease.
All right, y'all heard the resolution, about the reading of resolution 2025 dash five, this is simply a renewal. Leaving us for a 10-year period in the next.
The book to the brood, ready, 20 dash 25, excuse me, 2025 next one.
I see. Motion in the second.
Just a point of clarity here, Mr. Mayor, just to make sure we don't have a typo on Section 4 of the general lease. It says lease here's repairs. Reading this, the leasee takes care of everything. I'm just wanting to make sure that, that this is your walls, doors, roof, that that's not the resource that the leasee, I just want to make sure that there's not a typo there. I don't dump that in. So that everything's on.
All right, that, that was a real.
And that's fine, I just want to make sure that we didn't have a typo there.
Any further, regarding the question on resolution 2025 back then, that, that motion in second to, uh, remit this, that's this resolution, uh, all of the members, I'm saying, I am.
Aye.
I vote in standard approved. I'll take care of the $10. I would.
Can we all give Ms.?
Yeah, Ms. Liba.
No, if you have any questions for me, I'll answer.
Any, any council or anybody has any questions?
I appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you. As someone else said, we've got 40 kids coming in the morning, I hope so.
And don't, don't worry, we'll get everything done, I'll take care of them.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, moving on along, um, perfect reading, I assume, Ms. Craig of ordinance 2025 dash one, um, establishing general speed restrictions. Um, I know that you and Lacosta have worked on this, or, and, uh, I know that it, uh, I guess we need to read the whole thing there, did it?
That's correct. Uh, and also, I, I would entertain if someone wanted to waive the second and third reading on it as well tonight, but that's up to the council.
Okay. Let's go ahead and read.
Ordinance 2025 dash one, an ordinance establishing general speed restrictions. Whereas the City Council of the City of Bologna, Arkansas, desires to unify speed limits for non-state owned streets in the City of Bologna, Arkansas. And whereas the City of Bologna desires to unify speed limits to reflect actual conditions in the community and protect the health, safety, and welfare of those persons traveling on the streets, boulevards, and roadways inside city limits. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Bologna, Arkansas, Section 1 Speed Limit. It shall be unlawful for any person operating an automobile, truck, tractor, motorcycle, bicycle, or other vehicle upon any street, alley, or other public property within the city limits other than such portions of said streets designated as state or federal highways at a speed higher than is posted upon such stretch of the road. Unless otherwise designated by official signage, the default speed limit shall be 30 miles per hour. Section 2 Penalty. Any person found guilty of violating the speed limit within the city limits of Bologna, Arkansas, shall be punished as designated by law, by state law. Section 3 Effective Date. After passage of this ordinance, all limits shall be enforced after proper signage has been erected, posting the speed limits for the streets and roadways of the City of Bologna. Section 4 Superiority Cause. In the event any portion of this ordinance is declared inoperative or invalid as a result of a statute or judicial decision, then only that portion expressly so declared to be inoperative or invalid shall be affected thereby, and all other provisions hereof shall remain in full force and effect.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion, open up for discussion. All right, we have to have a motion in second. That's the rule group, I was like.
I understand, I want to make a motion to open up for discussion.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, all right. We have discussion, honey?
Uh, just to give all the council a heads up, this was sent to our attorney, Dustin did read over it in the email bag. I don't know if y'all got a copy of that or not, saying that he was good with what it said.
We didn't get a, I didn't get a copy of it, and I'm in agreement with this, I don't have a problem with it. Um, I do want to call something out that I just noticed when she was reading this. Um, and I know Dustin looked at this, but it's, to me, this conflicts with itself. Let's look at the first, whereas, the City Council of the City of Bologna, Arkansas, desires to unify speed limits for non-state owned streets. When you go under Section 1 of the speed limit, and I'm sure this is copied out of, uh, the state's code, but when you look under speed limit, it says it shall be unlawful for any person operating an automobile, truck, tractor, motorcycle, or other vehicle upon any street, alley, or other public property within the city limits other than such portions of said streets. Okay, I, I read that wrong. Alley crew.
Any? Order 2025 dash one, do we have any further discussion or anything on that?
What, what, is it, is it the speed limit now, not 35 in both places?
I know some subdivision, you're 45. Yes, sir, and I can pull it up on my computer here, but state law.
Well, that's fine, but.
State law says 35.
If people are speeding at 35, do you really think they're gonna slow down if you put the speed limit at 30?
So, it gives our, our police officer, and Jake, correct me if I'm wrong, it gives them something to enforce and help on. So, for example, right now, it crosses any, any non-highway, like municipal street, city street, it's 35 miles per hour unless otherwise, a city creates an ordinance and posts it. Um, so for example, Alley Page is a street route, there's not a speed limit sign on it. Um, you can currently go 35 miles an hour down Alley Page and not get a ticket.
Seven.
So which is extremely fast for a neighborhood street.
So here, here's what we were trying to do here, I think this, this was not brought up from me, this was actually from public comment. We've had a lot and everything, I know Lacosta has worked on it, Steven's worked on it. It gives the, the city police department a chance to go into these subdivisions. We've done, guys, majority of them are posted, and they've been posted 20 years before I got here. And it just kind of brings all that together, puts it where the police department can enforce it. And maybe can help with some of the issues that some of these people have, uh, had concerns about in subdivisions.
The way I understand it to read is unless there's a speed limit sign posted, that speed limit sign could be 5 miles an hour, it could be 55.
Yes.
If there is no speed limit sign there, then.
Default speed.
The default speed is 30. Now, I would probably think we should probably evaluate as the City Council or as the city, uh, administrate. This is administration, I mean, we should probably look at streets that doesn't have speed limit signs, and maybe we need to try to put one there, just so there's no questions ever down the road and people getting upset and that kind of stuff, like Alley Page. I would hate to see people drive down Alley Page at 30 miles.
Oh, I agree. Uh, and that would be one of the things that, if we pass this.
It could be 10 miles an hour.
If this is getting passed, that's gonna be something I'm gonna do in my work, and I would encourage all the other councilmen to kind of drive to their wards, and city, what streets don't have speed limit signs that may need to have, they reduce lower than 30.
You know.
Over 30, you know, I mean Church Street, I think's done at like, what is it, 45, May? I can't remember.
35.
Is it 35 on Church? Okay. Um, whatever the, you know, maybe it needs to have a little higher speed because of the type of road.
My.
But that's some of the kind of gather information you get with the police department, I would think, and the mayor.
My question would be, if we had, like in my area, you know, I've been fussing about the speed limit there, to me 25 is too high. But, uh, if, if we wanted to change that, or like in, in, on Alley Page, if you wanted to put a speed limit sign there, is that something that we're gonna have to act ordinance on each time?
No, um.
Does that have the discretion of the, of the administration?
That was kind of one of the things I talked with the city attorney about, I had questions on, and he, he said that our, our judges that we currently have will, uh, whatever the city puts up there, that's what the sign shows, and that's what they'll go with. Um, so there was no real need to put that up right now. Now, if something gets challenged later on in life over laws and stuff, because as we say, you know, they've changed, state laws change every couple of years, and so do city and stuff like that. We have to address in the future, we can, um, and add a section to this. That goes about how we change.
But 25 and I are pretty, it's the standard for subdivisions in the town. And I think that's a pretty good speed.
And one of the things on this too, like we were talking about, we've had a lot of growth. So if there's not a speed limit sign on a street, we don't want someone to be able to say, oh, well, I didn't know. So this gives us a blanket overall, and then if there is a sign, you know it's slower than that. So that'll help our police department out with the people that say, I didn't know.
Well, they may not know, but it's in the law, so.
If y'all decide to don't put this, I would have the street department, we will do the surveying.
Okay. Party, this is when you turn off the street, over to the street, the social gathering.
So I'll give them that.
And Brad, if you brought it back, this, uh, but probably one of the most, uh, trouble spots is Cemetery Street, going from Main Street to the ballpark. Main Street to, uh, the ballpark on, uh, Northbound Olive. I know we, there, I think the one on Cemetery is supposed to be 20 miles an hour. We got a lot of complaints when people speak going to the ballpark. So we set up a couple officers out there, they stopped cars. Uh, I think they only roped one ticket that night. There was one guy doing 55 in the 20 zone. And I got a call, a guy from the forest, failed to hear you ever heard, called, present enough a, a speed trap. Is that people?
You never get any better calls.
They literally not, yeah. But how dare you try to enforce the speed though, so that's, that's something we're really.
Do y'all, I, 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 just silly question, would y'all do patrol in subdivisions, right? Do you ever just back up into somebody's driveway and sit there, watch?
Very seldom, actually, just sit there just because they see you before they see you.
I got a spot. He won't be sitting on the driveway.
To be quite honest, you, if you're in your home subdivision, you see all.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's good, uh, for our town, but if I go set a guy out there to go sit, and that subdivision on that street, right out, and just see what car, that might be going top over.
And there's not enough room to sit up.
Well, no, I, I think one thing that Jake's been good about when we got calls is I've asked him, and he'll go over and, you know, have some more patrols through there and stuff, and, you know, it can be good sometimes. If we have problems in areas, he's been very good and offered about solving some issues with that. Um, it seems like folks that sometimes don't have much common sense and can't figure out how to ask, or how to say to repeat that behavior often. And, uh, an officer there that needs to talk me down.
You know, in our subdivision, unfortunately, it's the ones that live there, we get comfortable and settle. A lot of people roll through the stop sign or whatever. Now, they get upset and get on social media to be mad about it, but I think it's everybody just being conscious of what you're doing. You know, you can take care of your own subdivision in that, it's not that we need someone to get a ticket for rolling through a stop sign. We know we have to solve it at the stop sign.
I'm thinking this is one of those things, why do you put a lock on the door? Keep honest people honest. If they're corrupt, they're still gonna break in. If people are gonna speed out, don't care what speed limit that you got, they're gonna speed. And I'm not against this ordinance, okay? It's just that, uh, I can foresee already those phone calls that council and the fires, nobody was talking about. Y'all better get ready.
Well, Houston, Houston subdivision already acting.
Over this right here?
Yeah, well, no, when you start right in the city.
Oh.
When you start, when you start getting enforced.
They've been searched with my subdivision, some, I've seen out in these subdivisions.
Well, I'm scared on that, but, yeah, that don't stop. The, the police can drive through, and, and this is true, it's gonna happen. 15 minutes later, here comes four cars.
They always break along the policing route.
Obviously, if you're speeding on my street, 55 mile an hour, obviously, you know, whether it's posted or not. So I, I don't think, it's, it's supposed to be 35. I don't think if we change that to 30, it's gonna make any difference. Those people are still gonna be on 55 up and down my streets until somebody finally.
Your street would still remain 35 under this rule.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, yeah.
Here's the big thing about this, this is, this, this was, this was what that requested, I wasn't in the middle of it, but it's my understanding that this is give uniformity, and to make sure that there's a standard, um, code and everything, and the, the actual speed limits that are already posted can be enforced without any question.
I think it's a good, it's the same thing as the air force thing. They got a gigantic sign that says, uh, if you post it, big squad is 30.
You remember, you know, what's that, speaking, you remember that?
You already remember that. Now, you ought to remember that, so let's just say that's. All right, what is the will of the council?
Make the motion to approve order 2025 dash four.
Either wait the second, third reading first.
Okay, who wants to wave that? Will the council?
I'm moving that we wait the second and third reading. I don't see anything controversial on this.
I'll second it. We don't have an emergency council. No, it, it will affect our days from now.
So we'll, so we have a motion in a second to waive the second and third readings, the order of twenty twenty, twenty-five dash one. All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we'll entertain a motion for the passage of ordinance.
Move to approve orders twenty twenty-five dash one.
Second. Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty twenty-five dash one, establish a general speed restriction? All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Both stand approved. Thank you, council, I appreciate it. I think y'all done good work down there. A good news, I quit digging. I did thank you for going to get this. Terry's update, he said a couple of updates for the Park and Reg Department. The National Fitness Campaign, he is pausing that project for right now. And I thought that might be a possibility. And he said he would look at that again in twenty twenty-two. Spring softball, baseball, and basketball signups are open until February twenty-eighth. To sign up, you can come by City Hall, fill out a form, or you can download a form from the website, citybalonia.net, backslash parks. I feel much better now. Well, I like to always have that.
Can I give an update on the Fox Room pump station real quick?
Okay, yeah, we got that in there.
Yeah, we got that in there. The, the orange pump down there is a temporary pump. It has not been there three years though. I don't know how long it's been there, but it's not been three years. The contractor has re-did that lift station. We're now waiting on the electrician to come in to hook up the permanent pump and then the orange pump will be gone.
Well, it's been there as long as I've, I bought a home there in twenty-one and it's been there as long as I've been there. But.
I had it being down there a long time, you know?
I just didn't know if that's what it was, but he brought it up. So anyway, nobody's complaining. Very quick here we go.
They probably will now, Joe.
I actually had a lady called in about that. She said it was noisy there behind, it's behind her house and it was noisy there. Yeah, it's there at the end of the loop. And they bought a house recently and then after they moved in, because they were from out of state, after they moved in, that's when they heard the pump. So she has expressed a concern with the noise on that. But if we're working on getting it fixed, that's, that'll be hot.
And I, you know, and I, I'll digress just for a second. I'd say it's all the growth we've had, which is a very positive thing. And I won't, I totally agree with, I won't brag on the search department, Joe. Committee members, they've had to do lifting. And with the tremendous amount of growth that we've experienced in our experience, your infrastructure, your water, your sewer, your roads, they all take a toll. And it keeps serving meeting our prayers. So they've got a lot to work ahead of them. And they've done a good job keeping up that tremendous amount of growth.
So they were moving ahead, I'll be looking ahead.
Yes, you are.
Because we bought that land up there for the, the next expansion. So, because as, as we said earlier, it's not going to be wrong to worth five thousand or whatever.
We had another five hundred on.
Could I just question, Joe, around this subdivision? Do, does the search department have a good amount of reserves if there comes? Because these pumps, I know like that one's over thirty, thirty years old and one on one oh seven. Now we've got five, I don't know if there's any other pumps down. I don't have, I don't have a vendetta there. I'm just saying, do we have a good amount of money in reserve? Because the days come, it's like an old car. I feel like that pump one oh seven is like an old car to keep throwing parts at. And eventually you have to decide, is it cheaper to get a new car or keep throwing parts at it? So I'm just saying, do we have, you know, you throw out a number one time about how much to replace one pump. But as the times, as we're moving along here, that stuff's going to have to probably start being replaced. And it's a title.
We have started, it's been, it's been replaced all along before we built it. And yes, we did have some CD. And we are applying approval with the money, let me say that.
How many years have you been there?
Sure, clear. One year, at least.
I, once again, I want to.
Mary Wyche just said, do we find somebody to replace me?
They have been very good with their money. Joe has been like a drill sergeant on that. I learned early on one of the things that he has that well under control.
We've got, we've got good people, I don't want to brag on people, whatever. There's good people, we've always had good people at the search department. And they're the ones that keep going. I, I just get to sit there and look down and see what they're doing.
And I will say this, that's a very important job and it's something that I've not been around a lot. And I've learned a lot. Searcher, very city environment, it's a very nasty environment. Those young men have a lot on their plate and there's a lot of rust and corrosion and they have really, really done well. I think when the one oh seven station is finally, gets where it needs to be, it's thirty something year old. I think it's going to be in good shape. And thank goodness that Joe and them were foresighted enough to go ahead with the expansion and the diversion. Earth would have a lot of problems. You know, late we're close, solved the problem, said, look. All right, I'm sorry, Spirit of Onion, Don Maron, come on, come on back.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for allowing us to come. I'm Don Maron, I'm the executive director for Spirit of Onion and Cindy is the superintendent. And as you heard earlier on the Chamber of Commerce, we've got nonprofit of the year in this year. We're very happy about that. What we wanted to come tonight was just going to give our annual information we've been coming the last few years and letting you guys know, just to do up with the community, but also to revisit the discussion we had last fall about the possible property lease agreement with the city to be able to expand the Spirit of Onion. We've been looking at options to try to do that. But we have some pamphlets, would that be okay? You guys would love to have.
There's a lot of bros.
There's a lot of information in there and we're not going to go over all that, but I just want to kind of touch base.
So y'all, make real quick, I'm other than pretty old and that's not really the topic. I'm going to go take it. I'll be right back.
Our statistics for twenty twenty-four, this is really kind of, to me, it was, it was amazing how much we've grown. I started working with the Spirit of Onion in twenty fourteen. So we, I didn't have a lot of information set up at that time for statistics, but beginning with twenty fifteen through now, we have had just an unbelievable growth.
If I may tell you that all of our statistics before twenty fourteen were a half ago.
Yeah, yeah. So.
That building that went, that, that went with us.
I, I had a few things that somebody had on the jump drive from twenty thirteen and we had so many days that we had five people come up to get food. So it was pretty, pretty low at that time. But in twenty fifteen, we served fifteen, about fifteen hundred meals a month. So it's about eighteen thousand meals for that year. For twenty twenty-four, we served over sixty-five thousand meals. So it's, it's amazing. And the people that we've had, that we've got more volunteers now that we can handle. We're actually scheduling people now. Used to it was like calling everybody, say, can you work this time? Can you work that time? But now that it's expanded as much as it has, I mean, so many people and they're all looking forward to us expanding our hours and hopefully our space as well. And there are several churches listed there. The money comes from the churches on a regular basis and the money that we make through that little thrift store, which is about a thousand dollars a month on average. That all goes to buy food. And right now, we've never turned anybody away for food, ever. And somehow it's always managed to be there. We, on a monthly basis, we buy our food and the money that we bring in. It's the, it's those occasional donations, if somebody coming by and say, here's five thousand dollars, that really push it. And we, we've got a few people that do that for us every year. But we're, we're able to serve anybody that comes through, so we, we're grateful for that. But we're also able to help a lot of other ways in the city. I know the fire department once recently had a coke drive. And so we gathered all of the coaks that we had that had been donated there and gave those to the fire department to be able to expand that. So we're also listed with the school and they send some of the kids down there that have the academic, you know, hours that they need to put in for volunteering. So we have some kids that schedule to come down there and volunteer and work with us. Linda Marie works with us really well, she has a consignment section. And if people don't sell them and they don't necessarily want that stuff back, she donates all that clothes to us for us to be able to sell those.
Cardboard.
Pardon me?
Cardboard.
Yeah, then a cardboard we also have with the school. I don't know what the name of the disability where they sell the cardboard and that money.
The special, the special needs group. It's a group of special needs students that breaks it down for us and they bring the money for it.
So, yeah. We don't have a lot of prom dresses, anything like that that we get from the school so that they can help any of the kids that might need that. If they need any clothes, specific size or whatever, they call us and we can donate back to them as well. We work with, Feed the Vets in Cabot. They only serve once a month and they have a lot of food donated to them. And once that day is over, that food may expire before they have another day. So they call us up and say, hey, we got fifty gallon of milk and we break down that you guys give away. So, but we do the same thing. If we get like a large donation of vegetables or something, we don't give them out and it's close at his time, we'll call him and have him, you know, come pick that up. And so working with all these other communities, that's a blessing and helps both of us, you know? We have about three hundred and eighty families listed in our database at the end of twenty twenty-four. So if a lot of people, we had started serving four meals per person instead of three meals per person. So that also, you know, contributes to that sixty-five thousand that we gave away in twenty twenty-four. But I also know that the report that was printed, I think it's September of twenty-four, for twenty-three statistics from the USDA listed Arkansas as number one food insecurity. And that's just crazy to me. I mean, we were number three for a long time and then we, we moved up to have us as one in five persons have food insecurity in Arkansas. So obviously it's been needed, especially here. We've, we've had a lot of people that would give them away. So that is why we want to expand and I think it would be good. I mean, we're only in half of the building there. I don't know, all of you know where we are, right down on Main Street, across from Methodist Church. We're just, we're in half of that building. And I really think we could, in, in our plans and what we're working with, someone to try to get drawn up as a fifty by one hundred. But we also need space where people can draw off furniture and things that are a little bit bigger that they might get sale or, you know, how.
And I'm not interjecting, but I will, I think the council, last time y'all were up, general miscommunication. I think the council, and I'm not over speaking, is very open to the concept. And I think they'll need a kind of footprint in the work and the funding. You understand kind of the general things and then come back and consult with them on it. But I don't think that I've heard any.
Well, one of the things, yeah, one of, y'all were very open to the discussion and one of the things we could mention was what the lease type looked like. And the lease that you currently have with V D R A, which is for the site we're in right now, is going to be ending in April. So y'all are going to be needing to renegotiate that anyway. So that might be a good chance for us to figure out what the lease for us over on, if it is still Northbound Olive, great. If not, if it's somewhere else, we could maybe look at that. But we, we would need to know kind of the dimensions so that we can kind of figure out what the drawing would look like on what.
I don't think I'm over speaking for this group, but I'll, I think what you're going to need to do is, is come up with what you're wanting to do and put it on that piece of ground.
Okay.
And then come back and that way the council will know how much you're going to need.
Okay.
I was given in that.
That's where, that's where I've been more sure where it was going. We know we want about fifty by a hundred, but we don't have the schematics.
Am I overstepping here? That's going to be all.
You need a concept.
Yeah, I, as well, I was going to say, we have an architect that, that I was talking to. I've not got complete permission to tell everybody that, but, but she's going to help us to draw up something to have a general plan. And so.
And tell her, you know, if it's an acre and a half and how much it's kind of the general concept of what you'll need.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but we, we have notes about what we want and we just haven't been able to get it into a drawing. So we know we want, for example, a garage door because there's going to be needs for that kind of draw off. And we know we're going to need places for refrigeration. I mean, we know what the.
And I call it that, there's any confusion.
No, no, I knew that we would need something, but I still wanted to give you guys the angle.
I know myself personally, I don't have a broad, all in world of leasing you guys property. My only concern for you guys is not for the city. It's just that if y'all raise all this private money to build a two million dollar complex out here and then, and then, you know, you know what tomorrow is. That two million dollar complex belongs to the city because you can't separate that from real property. But as long as y'all are okay with that, I don't have a problem with it.
And that's where, and that's where the discussion about the last agreement came up because the agreement had some kind of, and I don't really know what it was. I think I'll talk in my head, but there was like a, an increasing, a decreasing value that would be reimbursed should the city have to take the property back or something like that.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but it was just.
No, that's why the old one was written. So we were sure, and now that you don't have to listen to the attorney, now that, now that we look at how.
So, yeah, we would make that.
Well, you can even do on the initial lease agreement of the property, a, maybe a fifteen or twenty year agreement. And then after that one expires, go to a pen from that point. That way you guarantee at least you recoup your investment.
And I think your new attorney coming needs to look at the way the agreement with V D R A was because it was that same issue, you know, the property, the building that, that we and V D R A together raised the funds for to build on city property. And so of course you can't, the city can't take it off. And so that has to be like in, in the agreement as to how that transition would happen.
So that would be something y'all forward and I may, I may give up the attorney.
Okay.
Mr. Eck, I ask you a question.
Go ahead.
Will we have the lease for that building that's coming up in April? Will it be at the next council meeting?
That is my understanding.
It will, okay. If not, could you send that to us so that we can look over it? Because a lot of us were not here when that was ten years ago. So we need to take a look.
It's just off my cuff of what she's explained, and I wouldn't be okay with that. With us, with us, if I understand what you're saying.
And that's if I was.
Yeah, so I mean, when I look at lease just off my cuff, I don't know how I feel about that. But at the same time, I understand, you know, it's y'all's investment, so. Yes, that's, that's my only thing with it, but I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem leasing well. Do we have other property in the city besides what's here and out there?
We, we've been blessed the last six, seven years to fourteen acres here beside the city hall. Somebody somewhere down the road will build a community center. You've got to have lands where you can do it. I think there's around thirty-five acres up.
I think a good spot for what they're looking for possibly, and I mean, I'll get to you later on, maybe part of that four acres that we have over there by the parking for the soccer complex.
That would look good. And right on the side of the creek.
That's where I'm thinking that. And I just pulled up on Google, that's right at an acre. That whole triangle concept is right at an acre and a half.
But to answer your question, we've been, a lot of the people that have, that have come here to look have been impressed with the mountain green spaces. We've been able to put together for future use. That's going to be a blessing on down there.
It will be.
It'll be great. But, but no, we've got, I think there's thirty-five or forty acres on Northbound Olive. We've got the baseball complex. We're blessed to have, I think, all together here about twenty or twenty-two acres here now.
We got options.
Well, you've got to have ground where you can build palaces. Yeah, you don't build them in thin air. But yes, come up with that.
And you've got an architect who's pulled up.
I want to tell you personally, this, this ministry, and I had to step out, but it, this ministry has meant a lot to me personally, meant a lot to my family and my family business. And, and I'm telling you, we've been blessed by what we've been able to give to them. And I know the church right now, first act, this has really been a big part of the child on them and it's a blessing. And there's a lot of things that everybody deserves a little something. And I guess that's old farmer coming out. We all deserve a little something, a good drink of water. So I just, y'all are a blessing.
I have a quick question. Just kind of listening to everything in the fan section and stuff that's been going on in Cabot, potentially leasing city property out and so procedure wise, would this need to go to the planning commission first with their site plan? And kind of have that approval before we approve?
I'm sorry.
I believe you're correct on that because building on city property is a conditional use, I think. If I'm not mistaken.
If we get the content together, we're going to go find a commission, that should be no problem.
At this point, all we want to know is how much land you would need.
Right.
And what, yeah.
But then the general concept of general land, you'll, you'll get with me and we'll, we'll make that.
We were thinking like an acre or two.
An acre, an acre. And the statement's a good idea. That the water and sewer's there already.
I believe this.
No, it is right now.
And part of it was the thing to do on parking, because we were, when you were originally talking about Northbound Olive, And part of it was intended to, um, um, parking, because we were, when we were originally talking about working on all of these are places where it could be shared parking, you know, for example.
And that's the same with this, you can utilize some of that and share some parking with the ground.
That's a good idea.
So Alonia is number one for food insecurity. How do we assist? Our complaints, okay. And how do we help you as a city or even individuals or, or whatever? How do we help make it easier for you guys to provide that to Alonia?
Well, we have the Facebook post that we put on there, the all that's on the back of that too. Um, any type of donation, whether it's money, whether it's food, whatever, just paying the food drives, getting that information out. We try to make sure everything's on Facebook if we can. There's a email address on there too, if you have any questions or anything for Alonia.
Yeah, in the absence of a website, we have the Facebook, which is which one we can do. Um, but we are a registered five oh one C three, so any kind of cash donation is tax deductible. Um, a lot of people know that is a, is a big thing. Um, then also the gift and kind donations that keep our thrift store going. I mean, that, that's actually not a problem. The only problem I, we have there, and that's something that I know the police are aware of, is people tend to just leave them on our front step, um, which is not necessarily the most of.
That was a question I was gonna have for y'all actually, is I've got, my wife has got a bunch of stuff for donation, uh, for me to take down there, but I didn't know when hours. So I'll send them back. So Monday is nine to twelve is the time to come.
Yes, yeah. We, we have on our door, donations taken during open hours, but people just kind of just. And I know that's kind of an eyesore, I'll be honest with you. I, I, I mean, if one of us is driving by and we happen to see it and we turn it on on, you know, on a schedule, we'll thought and toss it in the door, but, um, you know, so.
That's how people take it.
And, and that's okay. So, so in the new, in the new facility, we're, we're looking at, at things like drop off areas and that kind of stuff as well, so.
So on your food drives, do you have them on an annual basis? Do you have them on certain days or how do people think about this?
The, the, the meet the need is twice a year. That's organized through the ministerial alliance and that's held at, at heart. Um, the Boy Scouts do there once a year. Um, the postal service does one, I think, as well, once a year, don't they, governor? Something about postal workers picking up cans of food. So we don't organize the food drives, we're just the recipient of those. We've never actually gone out and organized a food drive ourselves. Um, but I'm not love, I can't even think of any kind of, we have put the word out to our churches before in bulletin and in search that, for example, we need more macaroni and cheese and we're doing that, that kind of stuff.
But don't y'all go for the food bank sometimes, some days?
I would sell food bank.
Oh, yeah, we have. Yeah, we purchase.
With the black tire full of food.
Yeah, that, that's definitely we purchase with the Arkansas Food Bank network, because we can get it much cheaper. And that's one of the things, we, I mean, if, if a church or an organization, a civic club wants to do a food drive and bring us food, that's great. We can tell them, give them a list of the kinds of things that we would need, um, parishables and non parishables, because we could have resources and that kind of thing. But if somebody wants to just give us a financial contribution, we, we usually can get some of the same kinds of things, probably less than you would pay at like Walmart or place.
No, place acts would give that. About pounds and you can really.
So Stephen and I wrote on the, uh, development board and Eagle Fest would probably be a great time for you guys to do a food drive. If you're into organizing something for that or if we can help you with that, and I'm, I'm not sick of putting them out.
Cans of green beans.
I don't, I don't know the details. I'm just saying, we can do something. Okay.
That'd be good, that'd be great. And, and that would also raise the awareness that we're here to help people, people need.
Correct.
So.
So we can spread the word just by maybe putting more stuff out about you all on our social media.
Yeah, follow our Facebook pages and follow, share Facebook too.
And do you guys let Jay know if there's something going on so that, I don't know if it can be put on the city website or whatever, but.
I think no, it couldn't, so we never have.
Oh, I don't know. I'm just saying, do y'all listen to that?
Email and make that request and the mayor's office will look at it and make that consideration.
Well, the mayor likes that.
I got the cute in Jay. All right, well, if y'all have any questions, I'll, if it's okay, I'll, I'll work with.
Yeah, yeah.
Depending on the, uh, legalities and everything.
I knew y'all were getting into, and the last time I'd asked somebody about it, I was told, we're getting into city attorneys. I was like, okay, that's, that's fine. Let's get that, that person in place.
I got a good idea on the land too. You can always get some time and grow up and.
Yeah, I'll go see them for sure. And if y'all want copies of the new brochure for like your church or something, let me have.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I want to apologize for him stepping out and, and there for my, my mom. Just want to apologize to y'all. Well, guys, do we have anything else?
I move with Jern.
And Karen, thank y'all.